Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, May 3, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all the councilors are present, including City Administrator Kenrath. I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is located behind City Administrator Kenrath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to general. There are no general comments this evening. And that brings us to item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence, moving on to item six, Public Comments. The Administrator Kenrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one piece of public comment. I will read it to the record now. This comes from Kelly Archer, Ward 5, 185 Bradley Street. She writes, Dear Mayor and City Councilors, with the recent events and your receipts of three letters to the council by former employee Brandon Pettit, Kevin Matson, former mayor Sam Zaitlin, and Severn Belabo's letter last week, last week's letter by Ms. Anderson to you and the media, and the repeated requests in those letters and by citizens and within social media to not only independently investigate their and the citizens' concerns and relationships of former Economic Development Director William Mann, Mayor Bill Doyle, and former City Councilor Alan Minthorne, but for Mayor Bill Doyle to accuse himself of any and all discussion or participation regarding those matters pending in an independent investigation. For weeks, you have all known of these very, these very serious complaints, allegations, and concerns about a few past and present elected and paid officials. For weeks, no answers or responses have been provided or disclosed to the citizens of Saco's questions or concerns. For weeks, I have been carefully watching when the former Economic Development Director William Mann's potential conciliation or settlement deliberations will be listed in an executive session under legal consultation as it affects all taxpayers. With your motion last week to draft an agreement for your next executive session to be held most likely on May 10th leads me to the following comments and/or questions for the mayor, city councilors, and the city attorney. As the public is neither, is never privy to executive session content, the public does have a legal right to know who was in the room and who recused or abstained themselves from deliberations. Mr. Mayor, you did not recuse yourself last week. The statute states city officials shall attempt to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, always erring on the side of caution and public perception. Mr. Mayor, for weeks, the erosion and crisis of public confidence and trust in Saco's leadership and governance has been in serious jeopardy. Your name has been associated with several serious allegations over a five-year period. No one knows of your new direction. Please recuse yourself from the appearance of any conflict of interest until such matters are vetted. I am trusting that the current ethical and responsible city councilors will perform their extreme due diligence and hire an independent and thorough investigator in regards to the Human Rights Commission ruling against the city of Saco to thoroughly and independently investigate the employment discrimination suit and any potential settlement with the former Saco Economic Development Director William Mann, and to table any upcoming deliberations at the executive sessions until such investigation is completed and for Mayor Doyle to recuse himself in any and all related deliberations concerning these matters. Taxpayers, taxpayers deserve and warrant this high level of scrutiny prior to any deliberation or agreement, even if Saco's insurance policy covers the bill or a portion thereof. I beseech the council members to demonstrate courage, integrity, communication, transparency of disclosures and ethics, not only in yourselves but for the neutral, objective observer, to trust in the conduct, thoroughness, fairness, and impartiality of their elected and paid officials. And in light of even more information coming forward from concerned parties, citizens and taxpayers, will the council now request a thorough and independent investigation in all of the above, what is upon the horizon, and the employee, quote, employee in the parking lot? Thank you for listening to another hard conversation. Kelly Archer, Ward 5, 185 Bradley Street. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Up next, we will hear from Barbara Coleman. Barbara, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to the city council.
Mayor Doyle, I first have a question, which I sent a email last week. When are we going to be allowed to talk about the budget? To remain during this public comment doesn't seem appropriate. And after hearing what I just heard, I would rather have a comment about that first and then deal with the budget issue during budget time. Do you understand my question?
The public comment quest, the public comment section is not a Q and A session. You can see from the agenda, there is a public hearing tonight on the municipal budget under Action Items, Item A. Now is the time for a public comment for members of the public to present their comments to the city council.
Okay, I did not have the agenda in front of me. I had a written piece. Barbara Coleman, 386 Bucks Road, Saco, Maine. There's a lot of information that gets tossed around in the city, and each side has had its own difficulties over the years. It is time to stop and everybody, and this includes the school department, as well as the city hall and city hall staff and everybody, to be properly trained in public proceedings in FOIERS. I myself had a conversation with the city, the new superintendent. He believed there was no such training, no such requirement. I, as usual, pulled the documentation and showed it. I am asking tonight via FOIER that every one of the individuals sitting before me, and I don't, including any elected, any appointed officials, and that includes our individuals in the city, as well as school department staff, I want to see everyone's FOIER in public proceedings certificates, or at least a checklist, showing that everyone has passed the class and understands fully what it means to have a public proceeding and not, and what they are supposed to do or not. This has been a long time coming. Now it rises to the occasion that it's public. And believe me, I've heard a lot of information over the years, and I've shut my mouth. Now it's time to open it, and now it's time for the city administrator, as well as the superintendent, and respective staff at all departments to take the appropriate training and to stop this going back and forth in understanding what the appropriate rules are, please. Can that be accomplished? And I know that's a question that I will email the city administrator myself. Thank you.
Up next, we have Ted Saroyes. Ted, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Ted Saroye. I live at 38 Summer Street here in Saco. I know this is a busy night, so I'll keep this very short. I've been on the Advisory Board for Parks, Saco Parks and Recreation for two years now, and I'm amazed at what Ryan has been able to accomplish with the resources that are available to him. It's scary to think how much more he could do with one more position. So I would just ask you tonight that you consider approving the extra funds that he needs for one more position to his staff. That is it. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Ted. Up next, we have Doug Edwards. Doug, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Doug Edwards. I live at 72 Hillview Avenue in Saco. I actually served with Ted. I've just recently come on to the supervisor, I'm the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I am just thrilled to be a part of Saco. And I thank you all for your service on council. I want to ask that you approve or consider the approval of the position that Ted referred to Ryan has requested for the new position in Parks and Recreation. It's a much-needed thing, and particularly coming out of our pandemic, we're just going to need more, I feel very strongly, we're just going to need more support to be able to provide those programs to allow people to congregate, get together safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Up next, we have Jame Katz. James, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Katz. I live at 3 Abbey Lane in Saco, Ward 4. Good evening, Mayor Doyle, councilors, and Administrator Kenrath. I'm the chairman of the Coastal Waters Commission and have been volunteer on that commission for 13 years. The Coastal Waters Commission wishes to provide this statement for public comments to the fiscal budget for 2122. Saco was very fortunate to have close access to the ocean, beaches, and the five-mile Saco River estuary from Cataract Dam to the sea. Our pier at Camp Ellis supports recreational users and commercial fishing and is one of the nicest piers in the area. Boat moorings are provided in our protective harbor and river at extremely low cost. The businesses that depend on and benefit from this resource in 2015 were calculated to generate over $53 million of annual revenue in Saco and Biddeford combined. This is one reason the Army Corps of Engineers agreed to fund the $3.1 million dredge that they did of the river four years ago. Resources of this magnitude all along the coast of Maine are what make our state unique. Wherever these resources exist and provide revenue to their local economy, they need capable professional management. Maine Law Title 38, Chapter 1, Section 2 requires that cities provide either a harbor master or law enforcement officer to implement municipal harbor regulations such as Saco's Chapter 118. Many other cities of Maine employ professional harbor masters at salaries from $40,000 to $60,000 per year, depending on qualifications and schedules. Many of these harbor masters manage harbors that have no more traffic or higher workloads than Saco. Whether they have sworn police officers or not depends on their needs. Saco does have police capability during the boating season. The current harbor master, Dan Chadbourne, has submitted his resignation effective December 31st. We thank him for 15 years of dedicated service, going way beyond a part-time workload. The Coastal Waters Commission urges the city council to provide in the 2122 budget funding for a full-time harbor master position. We recommend this position be included in the police department line items because we feel police should be the supervisor of the harbor master. We need to complete this hire sooner than later because the appointing can be oriented by the existing harbor master before he terminates. The ideal situation would be a shared harbor master with Biddeford, but if that cannot be accomplished, we need Saco to act on her own. I'll be happy to email a copy of this statement along with supporting exhibits for the assertions I've made herein. Thank you for your consideration.
Up next, we have Cynthia Chadwick Granger. Cynthia, you've been unmuted. Please present your comments to the city council after stating your name and address.
First of all, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Had a little bit of technical issues. Cynthia Chadwick Granger, 3 Shawn Place, Saco. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilors and administration. I just wanted to, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk. I just got home from work, and I wanted to speak on behalf of the full-time animal control officer. Would this be the time to speak?
Cynthia, you can speak now, or you can speak during the public hearing on the budget. It's totally within your, however you would like to do that.
Well, I mean, I'm on now. Basically, I just want to put it out there that how important this position is without going through all the details over and again about myself and the Sabres, Mr. and Mrs. Sabo, who were also attacked. There has been an increase, and I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I do know there was an increase in dog bites, and there has been an increase in barking, and there has been an increase at dogs at large. So this tells me, when we have issues like that, we need to do something about it, and we need to do it now and not later. So I think it's very critical, and it is due time that we fill this position and have a full-time animal control officer in the city of Saco. We recently passed the new dog ordinance with the new details that we added to it. That would be, the most appropriate time would be now to do that, because how are we going to enforce the new dog ordinance and what we've done and all the progress that we're making if we don't have someone to control that? So, and we just don't have anybody with him only working a couple days a week. That just doesn't work out. So I just want to put that in there. I am a, I'm a proponent for this. I really think this is important. I've talked to many other people that could not get on the call tonight. They do agree. So I just want to share that with the councilors and let them know that this is very, very important. Thank you for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Cynthia. Up next, we have Katrina B. Katrina, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to the city council.
Greetings, council. I'm the administrator, Katrina Batella here at 116 Flag Pond Road. Just also, I guess, seconding Ted's thoughts on approving the extra funds for Ryan at Parks and Rec. He's been helpful in an issue that we've been dealing with on Flag Pond Road, and I think that, you know, as the community grows, more programs and more services are needed. You know, if Saco is truly friendly by nature, you know, I think it would be a no-brainer to kind of approve those funds and give Brian the resources that he needs to do what we want and to do what the community wants and needs. So just thought I'd chime in, but thank you much.
Thank you, Katrina. Moving on to item seven, Approval of the Minutes for April 12th and April 20th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on approving the minutes? Roll call vote on approving the minutes. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to abstain from the April 12 minutes. I was not on the council at that time, but I will vote in favor of the April 20 minutes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson? Motion passes 5-1 with one abstention. Onto item eight, Consent Items. There are four consent items. Item A, Confirm Mayor's Reappointment of Lisette Pellerin to the zoning board of appeals. Item B, Confirm Mayor's Reappointment of Matt Provenco to the planning board. C, Confirm Mayor's Appointment of William Gale to Traffic Safety Committee. And D, Confirm Mayor's Appointment of Robert Chajo to the zoning board of appeals. Sir, anyone that would like to take anything out of there? Counselor Hatch?
Yes, I'd like to remove item B, if I could.
Item B will become action item A. Any other? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items, item A, C, and D?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote on approving the consent agenda items, A, C, and D. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passed 7-0. Moving on to action items, we have item, what was consent item B now becomes action item A. And that is Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning board is comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council for three-year terms. Each commission member shall be a resident of the city, serve without compensation, and must meet the qualifications outlined in Section 4-34 of the City Administrative Code. Mayor Doyle has recommended Matt Provenco, Ward 5, to be reappointed to the planning board. Matt was appointed as a board member on May 7th of 2018. This reappointment would be for a three-year term and expire on May 3, 2024. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the mayor's reappointment of Matt Provenco to the planning board to a three-year term from May 3, 2021 to May 3, 2024, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Hatch?
Yes, Mayor Doyle, I just want to commend you for reappointing Matt to the planning board. I think the appointment reflects good judgment in keeping an experienced and incompetent volunteer citizen engaged in public service that he's really well qualified for. It's important that we have planning board members like Matt engaged in our ever-changing land use settlement process. The history and judgment he brings is solid. Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping, and many others as well in the community, we humbly request that you exercise the same good judgment when considering your reappointment of Jeff Broschu. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hatch. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote on the motion to reappoint Matt Provenco to the planning board. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to what was action item A, now action item B, and there's a public hearing, adoption of the fiscal year 2022 municipal budget. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 22, 2021, the city administrator presented a recommended fiscal year 2022 budget. The school board voted on their budget on March 17th and was subsequently moved forward to the council for consideration. The council met with departments and agencies to review and discuss budgets and workshop in April. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 city budget and the fiscal year 2022 budget for the Water Resource Recovery Department.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passed 7-0 to open the public hearing at 6:55 PM. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone that would like to speak to the city council about the municipal budget, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine. First up, we have Barbara Coleman. Barbara, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to the city council.
Okay, unmute. I also would like to share my screen with you guys tonight. It's possible, if I know how to do it. I don't know how to do it. Can't do too many things here. Okay. First, I'm going to address the overlay. Overlay is a term that is used with the assessing department. The amount raised last year is more than, an amount raised more than what the property taxes are is referred to as overlay. For the year ended June 20, 2020, the amount that was raised per the revised assessor's document, audited by our auditors, submitted to the state of Maine, was $1.2 million of our citizens' money. So that is what is driving some of the increase to our, I'm, sorry, I drew a blank on the word, reserves. Last week, I talked about 31% reserves, and here you have 1.2 million that was raised that really didn't need to be raised. An overlay is not used for abatements. Abatements is a general journal entry, which I sent to the council tonight, the general set the accounting principles on how to enter the entry. It is, you take the taxes that the person wants to take away, it's a tax payable, and you net it against the property tax. It has nothing to do with the overlay. Second, we watched the doubling of the encumbrance of a fire truck. Again, no answer as to why it took so long for a delay when we notified the city administration of that doubling last break, last summer. It should have been encumbered and put back in so that we wouldn't be sitting with that surplus sitting out there. There is no need to leave it encumbrance if you don't need to. You already had paid for the truck. Second, why did we release the $400,000 in TIFs? And as somebody told me, it was because we needed money for our budget. Well, that can't be true if we were $10 million over our mill rate, over our, sorry, I'm not saying the right word again, over our reserves. If we're over $10 million over our reserves, we should have just left the 40. I don't know how quickly. Second, we keep watching double entries. We have a capital projects that are $178,000 over, which I provided last week. We continue to ask questions to assist the home artists. We do not get answers. We've asked about how many lawsuits, what is the general cost? We were told by the finance director, point blight at your meeting on April 2nd, I believe that was the day, that our budget book is correct. I can tell you pages 189 to 231 is not correct. There is no adopted fiscal year 2021 column. How does the administration build a budget when you don't have the correct information in it? I stated it twice before, and I've notified administration. At what point do the words get heard and action get taken? And yes, this is a question-answer period, because that's what public, public hearings are about. I would like to know some answers now, please. Counsel- Counsel Archer, I see that you're looking at your budget book?
Yes.
Am I correct that column is not there?
I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman, uh, I do see, I'm just looking at page one ninety-two, I'm just picking it out of the book, uh. Twenty-one says sixty grand, so I do see it, I'm not sure.
Do you see, do you see adopted? Fiscal year adopted? On page, what number are you on?
I'm on page one ninety-two.
All right, so you're looking at the blank.
Mr. Mayor. City Administrator. I just question if this is the appropriate, uh, manner in which to conduct the public, uh, the public hearing on this.
Well, where else are we going to get our answers to our questions? We've emailed, we've met, we've talked, talked to counselors, um, auditors, um, this is our meeting. This is the meeting of the public. This is the budget that you are building for us.
Mr. Mayor, I believe each person has three minutes for for public comment, and I see.
Wait a minute, that rule. Bride, City Administrator Kendrath. I asked what the rules were at the beginning of the meeting and was not provided a rule at all. So the three-minute rule went out the door.
Mr. Mayor, we believe we have others, others waiting for public comment, I question if this is an appropriate use of this time.
It isn't appropriate.
Thank you, City Administrator Kendrath. Ms. Coleman, please wrap up as you are now two minutes over the three-minute mark, so I would mean five minutes into a public hearing.
Mayor. I am asking the council to find out all the answers to all the questions that have been posed and the four-year requests that I have submitted sent to me by the end of the week.
The four-year request that you've submitted is separate and distinct from the public hearing tonight on the budget. Uh, and if you have, uh, if you have any questions for city staff, you can ask the city staff.
I have already asked these questions with no answer. So counsel.
If somebody is, Ms. Coleman, if somebody's not answering you, please take that up, but City Administrator Kane Rath, as the council has no, uh, direction over city staff.
Sorry, you didn't hear me. I went to the city administrator. I still do not have the answers. Counselors, hear me loud and clear, I have met with him four times. I still do not have answers. Mayor Doyle, it was.
If you, if you have, if you have questions regarding the budget, uh, we've said it multiple times that you can email budget at sacomaine.org, uh, and there's actually a page on the city website where they will answer your questions and put those questions up. We're at the public hearing and you are now well over the five-minute mark.
That's fine, Mayor.
For a public hearing.
Go to the, go to that page.
We're going to move on to the next person, uh, Mrs. Coleman, thank you for your time.
It's Mayor. It says that.
We're actually eight minutes now, Mr. Mayor, approximately eight minutes on one individual.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak on public comment, please use the raise hand feature. Up next. Up next, we have J C. J C, you've been allowed to unmute, please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Hello, this is Jane Karen, two sixty-four Lincoln Street, Sacoma, Maine. And, um, I have spoken at public comment concerning the Parks and Recreation Department and the budget that we're looking at, and again, I want to, um, support the full-time position for the parks, employee for the Parks and Rec, and, um, please support that, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. We have John Harkins. John, you've been allowed to unmute, please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
John Harkins for Christopher Terrace. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. You've got a difficult job ahead of you on this budget, and I I hope you, uh, do well. I'd like to support the position for the Parks Department at this point in time. And secondly, I was really aghast that I'd repeatedly asked questions, which apparently Barbara previously rose, and I have not received answers. This administration is blank when it comes to public rapport. We're paying salaries of all the public officials. We need answers. There are major problems with this budget and policies that are driving your decision-making. I would like to have some answers. I've been to the council twice over the last month on the same questions, and I have not received the courtesy of a response to any of them. Not his Barbara, apparently. So I, I think you should exercise your prerogatives as a council to make sure that the public has the opportunity to be heard and not silenced. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Up next, we have Margaret Mills. Margaret, you've been allowed to unmute, please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you, my name is Margaret Mills. I live at one sixty-eight Simpson Road, and I appreciate how difficult this process is. I, I just wanted to sort of present my, my general opinion about this process, not anything specific about the budget. I think the place you live is important, it's our home. And what makes a place desirable to live in? It's good schools, excellent schools, safety, and that means clean water and clean air, as well as not stubbing your toe on the sidewalk, and also appropriate law enforcement and appropriate fire safety and economic viability. And I know you're all trying to balance that. But if we can just remember the framework that we're trying to take care of our home, and we're trying to take each care of each other that are living in this home, sharing this home with us, it's difficult. When you get into the weeds, the details are very difficult. But the kindness and the, um, respect and the time we give each other is, um, is very important. And that's all I wanted to share tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. There's anyone else who would like to speak on the public hearing, the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two municipal budget? Please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Up next, we have Kevin Roach. Kevin, you've been allowed to unmute, please go ahead and do so, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Kevin Roach, eighteen Vines Road, also property owner at ten Millbrook, unit thirteen and unit sixteen. I'm spelling those out because I believe to speak at public hearing here, you need to be a Saco property owner or resident. So you could nod yes on that if that's correct. So I, I see that, I hear that some people are speaking that aren't even residents here, but, uh, we'll let that go. Um, also for the new counselors, uh, Mr. Hatch and Mr. Berman, uh, there is no pass fail for training, okay? Either you get some training or not, there's not a pass fail, it's just, just in case, uh, that was going to be foiled on you. Um, first, I just want to say as SOS Saco Bay, thank you to the counselors, uh, for, um, getting the sign letter support off. That ties into, uh, my personal request to, to approve, uh, something for the harbor master, um, some sort of salary, hopefully Bitterford will split with us in the future, but with, uh, hopefully the Army Corps coming in strong, uh, we need a strong position out at our harbor to, to, uh, handle matters that work that would be done out in our bay, out at the river. Um, on the budget overall, I just wanted to, um, follow up on, um, what the city administrator said last week. Gave a heads up to all you guys in the community about a ten percent increase. Uh, that is pretty, pretty steep, um, and that's, should be taken seriously. Um, I don't know at this time what breakout the schools in the city would make up that ten percent. And I think you guys are giving great opportunity for the schools to come back to you for a revised budget to help on their side. Um, of course, we all know about the, um, we all know about the federal money coming in and what's been going on COVID and the increase of the fund balance. So do your best to use one-time expenses with that fund balance to reduce the the mill rate. And also, um, I have a concern on the sale of the, I saw the sale of the public works uh, seeped into the operating budget coverage, and that's what you have to make up for this year, over two million dollars. So any way you can, again, move money from the fund balance to cover that, and then you'll have to deal with fiscal year twenty-three, um, wherever that that shook out as well, so. Anyway, a lot of work, appreciate all the work you guys do. Uh, but try to help us out on the, uh, on the, on any, any potential, uh, tax increase like that. Thank you very much, and, uh, good luck tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other comments for this public hearing? I don't see any more hands raised on the public hearing. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two city budget and the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget for the water resource recovery departments for May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Uh, any discussion on, on that? Motion, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, I would just request that, um, city staff answer any outstanding questions that are out there by members of the public, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
City Administrator Kane Rath.
Thank you, I do just want to say, uh, for the record to all the citizens of the city, um, you heard some of this, uh, in public comment tonight, alleged city staff has not answered questions or refused to meet with them. Uh, I will say on the contrary, we had numerous, numerous meetings with these individuals. We answered all questions, and I want it to be known that we are always, always, myself and any city staff available to any citizens with any questions they may have. Um, I have even open office hours, uh, monthly at this point also, where anyone can come in and ask anything they'd like. But I am always available here at the office. Um, Tori will also give out my cell number if you need to reach me after hours, so we are more than available. And, uh, we have in fact met numerous, numerous times with some of the individuals you heard this evening during public comment, so, uh, those questions have been answered. They've been backed up by our finance director, by our auditing firm. Um, and I am completely satisfied the city budget is in the right place, and, uh, again, we are always here to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kane Rath. Any further questions? And counsel, I just want to point to, uh, you know, for folks in the public who might have heard the dialogue, page twenty-two, twenty-three of the Council Rules and Order of Business. Uh, if you look at public discussion at hearings, uh, and public member requests to speak, uh, and that is item four and item five, uh, on page twenty-three. And what that spells out is, uh, a person has the right to be heard at the public hearings. Uh, counselors can ask questions, but it is not a Q and A back and forth with counselors or with city administration. Uh, and all that can be found again on page twenty-two, twenty-three, public, um, public participation at public hearings. Uh, with that, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, if the questions that have been asked could get actually posted on the city website, that may be helpful. Uh, I know in the past we've done that, and when you pull up that page currently, it says questions will be answered prior to the city council meetings. Answer will be posted on this webpage and shared during the administrative update portion of the city council meetings. So obviously we haven't been following that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I believe I was informed by Director Roy that we did not receive any comments or questions, uh, through there to be posted.
Thank you, City Administrator Kane Rath. Any further discussion on this? A roll call vote on closing the public hearing, setting the final, uh, vote from May tenth, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at seven seventeen P M. That brings us to what was item B, now item C, and that is a public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six capital program, and that is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, the city administrator presented the recommended fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget, which included, uh, section three of the overall budget, five-year capital program. The council discussed the capital program as part of the April twelve, April twelfth workshop. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six capital program.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Uh, any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote on opening the public hearing, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing at seven eighteen P M. Those wishing to speak to the city council on the two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-six capital program, uh, please use the raise hand feature uh, of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition on the public hearing uh, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-six capital program, uh, back to Counselor Purdy.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the council set the vote on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six capital program from May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote on closing the public hearing and setting final vote from May tenth.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at seven twenty P M. That brings us to item ten, new business, and that is, uh, council deliberation on budget and preparation for budget approval May tenth. Counsel, next meeting on the tenth, you will see, uh, only action items for the budget, these are the items you will see uh, that have been brought forward so far, so adoption, uh, item A, adoption. adoption of item A, adoption of the fiscal, of the fee schedule for fiscal year 2022. City Administrator Canrath, have there been any updates to that?
I do not believe we have any updates to discuss. Um, if Glenis is available, I'll just confirm with her if there's anything we need to talk about.
Any questions on the fee schedule? Uh, Finance Director, can we promote Finance Director Salas? Greetings and welcome, Finance Director Salas. Thanks for being part of the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You had your hand up. Did you want to uh explain?
Uh, yes. So uh I will, I'll work with um city administration to make sure that uh the full fee schedule is included as um an exhibit associated with this motion um for uh the approval night next week. However, um, the only changes uh that were made to the fee and penalty schedule are in the budget books um that were provided to the city councils and to the public starting on page 21. Um, just a couple of minor changes uh related to code enforcement for the most part.
And so if there's counselors that would like to make amendments to the fee schedule, uh they need to get those amendments in now so that you can prepare uh an amendment for next week?
Uh, yes, that would be correct. Um, the earlier the better uh so we can support administration and getting uh the packet assembled in a timely manner. Um, we could certainly discuss any amendments now if any counselors have any interest in making changes to the current fee schedule.
Are there any uh counselors that have any interest in making any changes to the fee schedule that's been proposed, uh starting on page 21 in your budget book? Okay, and and is there any counselor that has a an increased interest in being the council liaison? Or excuse me, the council resource for the adoption of the fee schedule for fiscal year 2022?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be more than happy to do that for you.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Okay, moving on to item B, adoption of the fiscal year 2022 Water Resource Recovery Department budget on start of page 16 of the packet. City Administrator Canrath, any changes? Or Finance Director Salas, any changes to uh what's been put forward?
I have not received any proposed amendments to the Water Resource Recovery Department budget.
Thank you. Any questions for council? Is there any counselor that would like to uh be the council resource on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. And we have item C, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 municipal budget. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion? Counselor Berman, you made the motion on the adoption of the fiscal year open in public hearing. Are you willing to make the motion uh for the final document?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And then council on on item C1. Uh, we have an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 city administrators budget number one, a parks laborer position. Uh, and that is that is on page 20 in the packet. Is there any counselor who would like to be the council resource for adding that position?
Mr. Mayor, I would.
Counselor, Counselor Johnston, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to item two, an amendment to fiscal year. Uh, let me back up. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to uh amendment one prior to next week? Okay, moving on. Uh, amendment two has been proposed by Counselor uh Berman, and this actually, he has made a motion to remove this uh because they have received funding out of a different uh area. Uh, so with that, we're going to remove C2, the amendment to fiscal year 2022 city administrators budget number two, Saco Bay Trails. Counselor Berman, that is correct, right? You do wish to remove that?
That's correct. They've received funding from other sources.
Thank you. That brings us to item C3, amendment to fiscal year 2022 city administrators budget number three, capital projects, page 22 in your packet. And that is uh put forth by Counselor Purdy. And that is for uh upgrades to different systems, an increase in accounts for the police station HVAC rehab. Increase to the police camera systems, uh refurbish refurbished emergency response equipment. Are there any changes to this amendment? Counselor Purdy, this is your amendment. We'll give you a first crack. Are there any changes you want to make to this?
I have no changes.
Thank you. Uh, any, any questions or changes from counselors? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, ju- just a, a point of clarification to make sure I understand. Uh, it looks like this is coming out of the use of, of fund balance. Is that to uh avoid an effect on the mill rate? Is that going to be the, the effect of that?
Finance Director Salas, do you want to answer Counselor Berman's question? I think the question, the answer is yes, but.
Yes, that's correct. It would be um in this amendment, it used to fund balance, so there would not be a tax rate impact.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, moving on uh to item four, amendment to fiscal year 2022 city administrators budget number four, harbor master on page 23 in the packet. Counselor Berman, this is your uh amendment. Would you like to make any changes at this time?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes at this time. Any counselor wish to make any changes on this item? Okay, this will come before us next week. Uh, and then we are at amendment number five, amendment to fiscal year 2022 city administrators budget blank form. Uh, counselors, this is uh for you to again uh on page 24, uh make any any changes that you would like to put forward. As Finance Director said, the earlier the better. Uh, if you have any changes or recommended uh additions or amendments for next week. That takes us through the amendments. Counsel Archer, sorry.
Not a problem. Yes, actually, I wanted to put forth an amendment. Uh, now I don't get, um, that way our uh Finance Director can add it to the correct line items. I would like to see the full-time animal control officer as part of an amendment. Uh, I believe uh Director Salas has the finance numbers. If not, our police chief does.
Uh, yes, I can put that for, together for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll be adding another amendment uh to the fiscal year budget. And that'll be put forth by Counselor Archer. And that is to add in a full-time animal control officer. So we're basically adding a part-time to the current part-time that's there and making a full-time position. Okay, that takes us through any amendments. Any further amendments that somebody wants to put forward? Okay, we get on to item D. And that is on page 25 of your packet. Adoption of the fiscal year 2022 fiscal year 2026 capital program. Uh, Counselor Purdy, you were the uh motion maker for the public hearing. Are you willing to stay on and see that through to final vote?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the capital program? Okay, moving on to item E. Council resolution approving the school budget fiscal year 2021, 2022. And and council, as we all know from the school board meeting, if you attended it, uh there will be some changes to this budget that they're going to be asking. Uh, and they're going to be recommended uh due to some, due to the changeover in administration. Uh, they're recommending some changes and we hope to have those uh prior to the packet going out for this Thursday, for the 10th. Uh, there may be some amendments to change uh some of these some of these line items. As you know, we can change line items uh in this school budget, so. Any questions on this? Is there anyone who would like to be the council resource?
Mr. Mayor, I can take that one.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, last year, I, I brought up the, the issue I had with the use of be it resolved for the, in, under the motion. Um, I mean, it, it may seem like a, a small difference, but being that this is a budgetary action, it really should be, be it ordered because that's what legislative motion would, would be. So I would just request that on these three school-related budget items, we change that from a resolve to an order. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. We'll look into the uh, the wording uh and make sure that it's correct. Uh, Counselor McPhail, you said you're willing to take on uh as the council resource?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so Counselor McPhail, any, any issue with taking on all three of the items related to the school?
Nope, not a problem.
Thank you. So that is uh also the council resolution approving additional local funds for the school budget year uh on page 28, and the council resolution approving adult education budget fiscal year 2021 through 2022 on page 29. Any recommended changes, counselors? If you have any, please get them into Glenis uh sooner rather than later so that the packet can be created and go out on Thursday.
Mr. Mayor, just want to uh make reference to Counselor Johnson so that all three um items would be looked at to, to have it changed to be resolved.
Yeah, City Administrator to Canrath.
Yeah, carries right.
Check into that language.
Okay. So all three of them have it.
And then we get to item F on page 30 in your packet, and that is to set the fiscal year 2022 property tax due dates and interest rates. Is there anyone that would like to be the council resource on that? Counselor Hatch, would you be willing to make that motion on setting the fiscal year property tax due dates and interest rates?
I, I will, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, item G or let's back up to item F here. Are there any changes suggested by the council uh on setting the fiscal year 2022 property tax due dates and interest rates? So you see the tax payment due dates are as follows. First half is due 9/10 of 2021. Second half being 3/11 2022. Uh, and then the amendment to easy pay date continuation, continuation of the easy pay program for fiscal year 2022 with eight monthly payments starting September 14th and end of April 14th. Okay. Moving on to item G, and that is reconfirming uh the authority to apply tax payments to the oldest outstanding tax, and that is uh page 32 of the packet. Is there a counselor willing to be the council resource on this item?
I can take that one as well. Either one.
I, I think I've, I've done it just about every year, so if we want to.
Have at it. Yep.
I'm just, uh, I'm just looking to see who, who may not have one uh for next week, so. Okay, everyone's, everyone's got at least one for next week, so. Uh, Counselor Johnston, you win, uh you'll get reconfirming the authority to apply tax payments to the oldest outstanding tax. Any changes the council would like to look at this? Or have made prior to next week? Okay. That takes us through the new business section of the agenda. Uh, so again, counselors, it's very uh important that if you would like changes made to get with city staff and make those uh as quickly as possible uh so that we can get the packet out on Thursday. Uh, and you will have ample opportunity to review and then further ask questions prior to Monday night's adoption. Oh, hopeful adoption. That brings us City Administrator to Canrath.
Thank you. Just gonna, just a quick note on that. Yeah, I would say earlier the better because as you know, packet deadlines are midday Thursday. Um, plus Glenis needs time to draft these amendments and get everything together and back to Tori for the packet, so. Um, earlier in the week, the better, uh, if possible. Thank you.
And so that brings us to item 11 of the agenda, and that is the administrative update, City Administrator to Canrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, starting with the senior meals program, our next event will be on May 13th from 11:00 to 12:30 at the community center. Uh, lunch will be provided this week by Kiro Cafe and sponsored by Grant from Southern Maine Agency on Aging. Um, Saco Parks and Rec is still looking for volunteers. If you are available or willing to help out, we'll need volunteers um from about 10:15 or 10:30 until about 12:30 when the um the uh, the meals uh wrap up. So if you're available, that would be great. Please email or call Amelia Meyer in Saco Parks and Rec if you're able to uh help out. And there will be one more additional date in the month of June uh for the meals program before we'll take a break uh for the summer period, and we'll have more details on that uh upcoming. Um, open office hours, uh thank you to everyone who attended last week's um city administrators open office hours event, and our next date will be May 25th uh from 3:00 to 5:00 pm on the second floor of City Hall. Um, I thank you uh again to Saco Parks and Rec for Earth Day. On Earth Day, we had um a huge slate of volunteers come out to do a citywide cleanup. Uh, thank you to everyone for their participation there. And I'd also like to thank city staff uh for their involvement in planting our new tree uh behind the city hall annex to commemorate uh Earth Day. Thank you to everyone involved there, in particular, um Ryan Summer and um Andrew Dickinson, actually, who did most of the digging to put that tree in the ground. So thank you. Thank you to both of them. Um, employee milestone recognitions. Um, I've had the honor the last couple of months of getting around to a number of departments to recognize um city of Saco employees um for their outstanding service at a number of different intervals. Uh, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, and we had some 30-year uh milestones reached. So uh we were able to get around, present some certificates. reached. So we were able to get around, present some certificates and some small gifts of our appreciation for their years of dedicated service. And if you haven't seen it, again, another thank you to Andrew Dickinson, but he put together absolutely fantastic video of all these events and obviously showcasing many of the people who we, who we honor, and that's posted on our YouTube page. So if you haven't seen that yet, please take a look, and thank you again to Andrew and Emily for getting that together. So thank you. That's all I have. How many say any questions?
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. I don't know if it was my connection or yours, but you cut out what is the meal program, the first one coming up here in May?
Sorry about that. So we have May 13th, 11:00 to 12:30 at the community center, and still looking for volunteers there. And then there will be another one coming up in June, and that will be the last of the season. It will take a break for the summer and consider starting back up on the fall. But so, May 13th, 11:00 to 12:30, Kiro Cafe at the community center.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Administrator Canrath? Okay, moving on. That brings us to item 12 of the agenda, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment tonight? Counselor Archer, then Counselor Hatch. Counselor Archer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just want to be clear, I'm not making a motion at this time under section 8b4 of our rules and order. However, I would like to see an executive session for next Monday to be added, specifically investigation of complaints against a person or persons under MRSA 4056A.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Hatch?
That was the same issue that I was going to bring up, so I will pass and lower my hand.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Any further comment and discussion? Seeing none. There is no executive session. That brings us to item 15, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Purdy, any discussion on adjourning? Roll call vote to adjourn. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes seven zero at 7:44 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.